Thank you, Dan. Let me say again, let me restart then. My name is Larry Bravidek and I'm serving as a chairman of our call committee. Both myself and our call committee come to you in all humility. We've been working to serve as God's humble servants in this process and your servant, and the servants of the congregation. We also come to you with a lot of enthusiasm because we have a joy of sharing with you today the description of a new ministry position here at Fishers of Men, where our congregation is going and what God has in store for us. So I hope you will enjoy it and ask your questions to the day's discussion. So before we get started, I'd like to turn over to Chris to share a word of prayer with us.
Thank you. Please pray with me. Gracious heavenly Father, please be with us here today as we seek to do your will to further your kingdom here at Fishers of Men. Please keep our hearts and minds open to you and to each other, to listen as much as we talk. Help us to be respectful to each other as we talk through and explore the exciting future of Fishers of Men. Please continue to bless the work of the call committee as we seek the person you have already chosen to serve you here at Fishers. And we ask all this in Jesus' name. Amen.
So Fishers of Men, Fishers of Men mission statement. Well, first, the Great Commission, they're really in full light. Matthew 28, "Go make disciples of all nations." And we have taken that here and had words with it to relate to us. Our Fishers family has translated that as a, for our congregation, is growing, loving, and serving like Jesus. So that's our mission as a congregation. It's a mission of making disciples of all nations, of discipling the saved and reaching the lost. Next slide, please. Our vision is how we are realizing that, or what we see around us to be realizing that. And basically, our vision is expressed, and I can read it here a little bit better. "Fishers of Men will be an open-armed family of believers focused on equipping the next generations in Christ." And that phrase, "equipping the next generations of Christ," is really also central, as you will see, to family ministry and our position that we will be seeking as a pastor of family ministry. So very, very aligned with that. Next slide, please. As this congregation knows, there's been a lot of transition over the last few years. We've had three staff members that have accepted other calls or have retired. So a real change in our called staff ministers, ministry. COVID-19 has been an incredible watershed event for our congregation, for the world. We've had a change in leadership. We have had people, new people coming and serving in leadership positions in this congregation. And I don't need to tell you that you can just look around and feel around for yourself in your changes, is we've had significant changes in our membership over these last number of years. And also, this community has changed significantly. As you well know, Fort Bend County and Sugar Land is one of the most, has been growing in diversity and is one of the most diverse communities in not only Texas but the United States. So we're in a unique position, unique challenges with changing processes, but in a place of transition and renewal. Next slide, please. Church, family, and household. These are different jurisdictions that they're distinct with different spiritual responsibilities. And we'll be talking about that more. The church, the family, and we're going to use family and household a little bit interchangeably, but household, as pastor will describe, is a little broader and more inclusive and is related to the described in the Book of Acts. "We, the church, in families or households or partners in the Great Commission, to seek the lost and disciple the saved. And the home, at that time and now, can and should be the center of faith formation for the next generation." So a little bit of quick journey here. Background slide, please. Go back to November or fall of last year. We had discussion and sharing from the Strategic Planning Committee, and they identified the position of pastor or director of family ministry as presented as our next important calling process here. The past, the Family Ministry Call Committee was commissioned by our parish leadership team in November of last year, 2020. And then it was appointed by the lay ministry team, as is their role, in January of 2021, January of this year. We had our first call committee meeting mid-month, January, and we've been working on understanding and growing with the concept of family ministry and also driving towards a job description, which is an important foundational document, which you have, you can pick up, and to this meeting to share with you and begin really engaging you, the congregation, more so in this call process. Let me just introduce the Family Ministry Call Committee, Call Team. I think many are here today. Jennifer Apple, sitting on the front row, myself, Alex. Did I see you, Alex?
Alex has had the closing of the Universal Chapel.
That is right. He told me that at Texas A&amp;M. Larkin, Larkin Gentry, Chris, who offered our prayer, Julie Keller, Julie's sitting over there, Tracy Hollis, Carl Miller, Carl, Jean Snyder. Pastor Braun is a non-voting member, but certainly has been important advising us. And Brooke Martin, I don't think she's, she's here today. Brooke is one of our youth, I think she's in high school, but she's been a wonderful contributor to our call process or call work. And I'll tell you, my personal testimony is, on a Thursday evening of a work week, my energy level may not be where it should be, but with these people, it's inspiring. So I just, I just thank them and first, and we will congratulate them when we're done. Okay? I would encourage you to, if you're comfortable with somebody on the call team, please feel free to talk to them and discuss your concerns or your recommendations or your suggestions. We stay, we want to stay connected and open to any kind of your questions today and afterwards. So let me pause there if there's any questions for clarification, because we're going to have a question and answer session at the end. Anything? Okay. The first step, we'd like to, Pastor has devoted two Bible classes, so we don't have the time for the richness of two hours of teaching on this subject. But we're going to ask him to come and share a little bit about what is this family ministry and why are we, why are we pursuing it for this next call position? Pastor?
Morning. You get to hear from me again. Don't have to have an offering. Just a little bit to say, one thing I want to say to you is I believe, because of the stuff that Larry has just put up here, that we are at a point of what I call a rebuilding. If you think about it, since in the last three years, we just talked about the three staff members, but we've also had two other staff members retire in that time. I think really, basically, the church staff that was here when I got here is Susan and Teresa, and so, and then all the teachers and so forth. So if you think about it that way, you think, why aren't we starting, I hear that a lot, why aren't we starting with a DCE? And I just want to say, it's because it's broader than that. We're starting out with a rebuilding of, and what is the big need for the congregation, not for a specific age group, although this does address that age group. And along the line, that may be a next step the congregation may choose to take. But this is broader than that. Where are we going long-term in the future? And when you want to know about family ministry, you need to know it's not a program. Okay? It's more of a process, it's more of a ministry that the hope is, as I understand, the vision is to bring groups together, working with one another rather than in silos, to teach the next generation. That youth ministry is not just the responsibility of the youth ministry team, but it's all of our responsibility. That children's ministry is not just the responsibility of the children's ministry, but it's all of our responsibility as a family. I've been thinking about the fact that, you know, this church never has called our announcements announcements. We call them "family matters." And so to me, it's another affirmation that that's maybe the identity of Fishers, that we're a family, building family and caring for family. Rather, this is an all-encompassing viewpoint that encourages the shaping of faith among family members from birth to death. You know, one of the things I heard in the beginning was, well, what about the young at heart? Well, I agree. Okay? What about the young at heart and the older members of our congregation? I think that needs to be a part of our total plan. And so we're looking at the family. You know, earlier Larry talked about households. And that, that's the word that we heard from the DCE and the pastor that we interviewed to kind of get a feel for what family ministry is. A household is broader, in the Scripture, it's a much broader term. A household, if you think about the fact that jailer in Philippi, it was he and his whole household became believers that night. It wasn't just him and his wife and his two kids, it was him and his wife and any servants, the people who worked for him in the, in the jail, it was his household. And the other reason we like that term is that sometimes, and I get this from my single son, is sometimes we use the word "family" and we really do refer to husband, wife, and two kids. And he always says to me, does that mean the church doesn't love me? Or do they not understand that I am a family too? And that I am a part of a family and so forth? So I think one of the reasons we kind of use those words interchangeably is to really, really look at, we're doing household family ministry, if you want to call that. Okay. I'm going to read it from here, because I'm glad I printed these out for you today. "When congregations and families partner together in specific, measured ways to focus on involving faith-filled people in the support of singles, single parents, husband-wife parents, one another, in nurturing homes where the faith is built and shared," it's a long definition, in genuine ways, I could spend five Bible classes talking about this definition, "shared in genuine ways, and the next generation is equipped to live out their baptism, passing the faith on to their children." I want to say something about that. Right now, we are on a model that is church-centered, home-supported. And what we're talking about is going to a model slowly, not overnight, that is home-centered, church-supported. And what do I mean by that? I gave the example in Bible class of that lady who came into me, she had a special-needs child, and she had done confirmation at home. How do we, how could we have supported her? And she, she did a better job than I think the pastors and the DCEs could have done. And how do we support her and parents who want to do that? How do we support and help parents whose kids are involved in sports all over the place, rather than complaining about the fact they're involved in sports on Sundays and on Wednesdays? How do we be centered in the home and in equipping the home to be a family? Because, folks, if you want this to be Lutheran, there is nothing more Lutheran than this, because this is how Luther begins every major section of the Small Catechism, "as the head of the household should teach his own family." It's never meant to be a textbook for the pastor, it's meant to be a textbook for the mom and dad, teaching their kids. And how do we equip that and talk about that? How do we work together to strengthen families? I love the open-armed family, because that's what I think we need to be. I think, you know, and when we, when we wrote the job description and I did my little deal on it, I tried to add in something, and I'm going to thank somebody, Jerry. This came because of what you said to me way back early in the process. This needs to be Great Commission. If this is just about doing a huddle and taking care of our little families here, then we're in trouble, because that's not what God has called it to. He has called us to be about reaching the world. And, you know, I've been thinking about the fact that we have, and I know people, we may not get them in our church, but we have families from ethnic groups in our community who are in our preschool, in whom the family unit is extremely important. We have a Kunama congregation that meets here on Sunday afternoons or Sunday mornings. Their culture, family, is important. And so I think this is a very much a part of our Great Commission, that we, we care about the families here and the families in our community. And I'm going to say this out loud, the preschool is not a business we run to make money. If it is, then we need to get out of the business, and we need to understand that the preschool is a ministry of the congregation. It is part of our church. And, and it is, it is, it is one of, you know, when we talk about signature, when we was in PLI, we talked about signature ministries of the congregation. I would say our youth ministry has been, I would say our preschool is the signature ministry of the congregation, by which we're known in the community. And it needs to be about, how do we share, not how do we get them to sit in these pews, but how do we love them and care for them and, and, and share Jesus with them, whether they come to our church or not? Okay? People say, well, they'll never become part of the church. That's not the goal of evangelism. The goal of evangelism is not to fill Fishers. The goal of evangelism is to fill heaven and let God do His work. So I just kind of want to really emphasize that. I put in here someplace on these notes, maybe it's on the next slide, Great Commission households. I'm including there your homes and your small groups and the congregation. Folks, a pastor once pointed out to me that great, that the small groups can be the, one of the most important outreaches in a congregation. Why? Because you can invite people to come there who won't come to church. I hate to tell you this, but unbelievers aren't going to show up here on Sunday morning, but they might come to your house to meet your friends. And he said he couldn't believe how many people came to faith in a non-threatening place like that, because the Word is shared in a small group, the Holy Spirit has the chance to work. The other thing is, you know, your families, your homes, you know who I hang out with? You. Okay? I have neighbors, though. So do you. I have, you have coworkers who aren't Christian, right? God put you in those places to share your faith, to tell them about Jesus. How do we, as a family, equip you to do that? Okay? Where we quit seeing ministry as something simply that, that takes place here. I know a church, I'll give you an example, a family ministry into the community. A church stopped doing VBS at the church and started equipping families to do a VBS in their own neighborhood. And, and it became a place for sharing the faith with the people in their neighborhood. And it wasn't so much about, how many people did we get, but did we equip people to share the gospel with their neighborhood? I saw some of that, I think, happen with, with the online last year, when we did that. So I think, you know, I'm convinced God let COVID happen for His own reasons. And some of it is to make some things happen in His church's life, which is what we got going on back there. I'm sorry, I got to speed up here, because you told me, right? Okay. Family ministry is not another program, this I want to say very clearly, not queerly, clearly. The DCE and Lonnie, who we talked to, said, "You don't stop doing what you're doing, you start where you are." So this doesn't mean we put a grinding halt to what we're doing in children's ministry or youth ministry. We begin there. And they said, all of them said, when I, both of them said, "When I come into a congregation, I start where the congregation is, and as the opportunity presents itself, I begin to introduce the things that are going to help broaden the ministry and make it more family-oriented." So please hear that. It's a gradual thing. I don't, it's not, it's not going to be like flipping a pancake. Okay? And then finally, this is the last slide they're letting me do. I love, so you'll get more done quickly. I love this. I believe this is central to the Great Commission. I love what Alex, who can't be here, Freyrick, said in the meeting, "This should be the springboard for all our other ministries." And so if you want to look at the Great Commission, we come back to that. There it is, being an open-armed family of believers. Great Commission has two parts, reaching the lost and discipling the saved. The Great Commission is a lifelong process. Sometimes we in the church spend a lot of time discipling, and we forget about the lost. And that cannot happen in this. This needs to be about what we're about, is the people in our community who don't know Jesus, because, folks, there are people in our community going to hell without Jesus. And so that's why Fishers exists, to be Fishers of Men. Okay, I'm done. I don't know who's next. I'll get out of the way.
Job description.
Is that me?
I think it's Jennifer.
So we're going to look at the job description. We're going to look at the job description. So the job description we're putting out is Fishers of Men Lutheran Church Associate Pastor of Family Ministry. So I'd like to walk you through some of the key responsibilities that we feel this position would entail. We looked long and hard at making sure the expectations for this role were clear and prayed very hard about it. Next slide. So if you were in Pastor Braun's Sunday School class or listened to it online, you will hear a common theme, intergenerational. We use that over and over. So this is looking at bringing people of all ages, the young and the young at heart, together through the coordination of the different ministries and outreaches. So of course, this includes within our congregation and an intentional outreach to the surrounding community. This will engage every type of household, as Pastor mentioned before. So when we talk about households, this includes everyone, the nuclear family, single-parent families, extended families, families with no children, blended families, grandparents, singles, any type of household you can think of, we want the pastor of family ministries to engage with. Next slide. So developing sustainable family ministry. So we want to make sure there is a clear focus on sustainable family ministry teams in terms of recruiting, motivating, guiding, recommending resources, and training. We want to make sure that this isn't about one person and that people are engaged and invested in this movement that the pastor of family ministry is building. So we're looking at bringing everybody into this. So this is a person that's going to coordinate it, but we, it can't be just about that person. We want the family in here to grow. Next slide. So this leads directly into developing a discipleship pathway, which means meeting people where they are at in their journey as disciples and guiding them into a closer relationship with Jesus. So for those that aren't familiar with Jesus, we want to train mentors up, to bring those people in. For the ones that are already there, that's, that's what their job is going to be. So we're pulling everybody together, old and young, whatever place you're at in your discipleship, that's where this person is going to be coordinating and moving people together. Next slide. So in coordination with the senior pastor, he will provide a solid base preaching and teaching to meet the needs of the entire family. This will include leading Sunday School classes, as well as preaching in church on occasion. So we want to further our outreach as part of the Great Commission. Remember, Fishers of Men's mission is growing, loving, and serving like Jesus. He's going to partner with parents, the congregation at large, and other church leaders to build households as families of faith. Strong families and households of faith are important. They are the heartbeat of a healthy congregation.
One of the abiding questions that's already, I've, have spoken to me about is the financial concerns. And so I've invited Shawn to speak a little bit from behalf of the PLT. I believe we have a summary slide there, but Shawn, can you add us a few words? I know you can do this with one hand tied behind your back.
I'm going to have to. Well, it's tied to my front, actually. So there have been concerns on whether or not we can afford this, or whether we can afford not to do this, to steal Pastor's slide from a couple weeks ago. And I just want everybody to be aware that from PLT's perspective, we have been looking at finances very cautiously. There have been some decline in stewardship in the last couple of years, but I want to just share that the positive is that we do have a balanced budget moving forward with this position. It's a, we're looking at up to a 20-year individual, with 20 years of experience, that is, and so we're budgeting that in, and we have a balanced budget to do that. So if people are curious about that, that's the state. I will also note that that does imply that our administrative accounts for about 42% to 44% of our stewardship giving with this position, which is high. And I talked about that at the Strategic Planning Team. That is a higher number than most congregations need. But as Pastor mentioned, this is about growth. And if you planted church, believe me, you don't even have those types of numbers. We need to look for growth, and this is a great opportunity.
Also, you might mention anonymous gift.
Oh, that's up there. Yeah, I didn't, I didn't know that was publicly being shared yet. There has been an anonymous gift, is in direct relationship to hiring this position, to make sure that costs around bringing people here for interviews and relocation have been covered. And I don't know if the amount is, it's a $35,000 gift for this position. So anyways, praise God, right? I mean, that's just a fabulous thing. And I hope that learning that is encouraging. There's so many times, as we've moved through this, that the Lord has shown His hand, just many times. It happened in the Strategic Planning Team, and I know it's been happening for the call group. It's a fabulous piece to watch the Lord come to work at Fishers.
Thank you, Shawn. Okay. Next steps. Next slide. Well, first of all, as we start today, and we ask your continued work at this is prayer. That's part of our call committee work. It's the beginning and the end of all of our, the Alpha and Omega of our call committee work. And really, it encourages the congregation to have God's will be done in this process. So we ask your continued prayer, and we've now, we've designated May 12 evening as a prayer, prayer time here at church. And just please, keep this process all of, all involved in your prayer life. Well, what happens next is we need to begin to develop a list of candidates from the congregation. We have at the back, if you have a pastor that you can, that you have in your, in your mind, that you would like to nominate, there's a nomination form. We ask that you return that to the church office. It's described on there, the various means to do that. You can, for example, scan it and email it after you filled it out and so forth. We're going to give two weeks for that process, hopefully to bring those in by May 16. After that, we take those nominations and also a package of other information about the position and about Fishers of Men congregation, and send that, ship that off to the Texas District. And they work at that, they review that, they will likely add some names, from what they understand. They may say, some of the names on there are not ready for a call, or it's not appropriate to call at this time for maybe an unknown reason. They, they will vet that, and they will return a list of pastor names to us then, to the call committee for further consideration. The next step will be to conduct interviews with the candidates and likely some site visits. And then that would end up with a refined selection by the call committee and a recommendation leading to a voters' meeting to extend a call. Given all of that, our sense is that probably, a voters' meeting to extend a call probably is kind of the August, mid-August timeframe, if things work well and expeditiously. But we shall see. We're going to do this very deliberately, rather than haste makes waste. Then it will be a prayer for decision by the congregation. Then it will be a prayer for decision by the congregation and also by that, that called pastor. And then there'll, if, if that call's accepted, then there's a move process. So realistically, you're, we're probably thinking about an installation October, you know, late September, October timeframe, really at the earliest. Love to accelerate that, but I've found that this is a sequential, not a parallel, process. So those are the next steps that like, that we hope to accomplish over the next number of months. Any questions for clarification on that? John, Jordan?
Have been, um, the candidate considered called in less than three years, or have been in the congregation for three and a half years? How do you know that they've been in the congregation?
Okay. Pastor can probably ask, answer that more accurately than I can.
Um, the question is, how do you know if a pastor, because the thing says, if they've been in their call less than three years, they probably won't be considered. There are cases where they do get considered, but there's a way to tell. You can look up their name, you can go to locate a worker on the LCMS website, put their name in, find out.
Go through the information. It'll say when they started, their present assignment, okay? But if you don't have the time to find that out, you put in a name, the district will tell us. See, the, the district presidents have an agreement that except in some kind of special circumstance, they will not put somebody's name on a list who's been at their present spot less than three years. They do in special cases, but not always. Okay? Next slide, please. Our goal, as Pastor talked about, family ministry in this call position, is that Jesus indeed becomes the heart of every heart, becomes the heart of every home. So we're starting from the home, starting with the household and the family. The church is an abler of that ministry, but it is really growing from the home. So that's the, the, what we're pursuing in the, at this time with the call committee. We're going to open it up now for your questions, and let's, let's stir the coals a little bit, because I hope you have...
Somebody get up with a mic and move around to, let's see who asked a question.
Let's see that we have both of them working.
Hello?
You might care if you walk around?
Yeah.
I have two veins of questioning. One has to do with the, the reservoir of people that fit what we're looking for in the way of pastor, the narrowness of it. And then, um, a knock on to that as to how do we measure whether it's going to be working or not? Do we have the discipline to do that? Firstly, we're looking at an individual who is an ordained pastor, but he's going down a fairly specific track. Have we had preliminary discussions with the district as to how big is that reservoir? And in, in the sense of a, the development of a, of a pastor's career, is this a midpoint? Endpoint? Where does this sort of specialty of family ministry fall? And are we, uh, what are our expectations for finding a large enough reservoir of, of people to fit this? And then, of course, the succession planning within a congregation, and I brought this up to the PLT, is that the number-two man very often likes to be number-one man, especially if his tenure, and we're looking for 10 years, exceeds the potential tenure of our, our current pastor. I've been in three different situations in churches where that became an issue and it wasn't very tidy. So we need to be very specific about, in our calling, what are our expectations and what are the, any implied promises concerning the succession of, of an individual? And now to the measurement part, I'm a big measurement guy, I've done a lot of that kind of stuff. How do you measure? But we have to be diligent about it. If we're raising a family, how do we measure whether the pastor or the, the father is the priest of the household? How, how do we measure that? How are we going to measure whether there's progress with the children? If we're dealing with the preschool, what are, what are the success measures for us reaching the children, reaching the parents? When we have, we had youth groups for a long time, pretty strong effort on that. Do we track the spiritual development of the youth in their history for a long time through college? Those things are very difficult and disciplined, but I think they're necessary. You get what you measure.
Okay. A lot of questions in there to unpack. Do you want me to start out with a few of those, or?
I just, I'll speak to the reservoir one.
I don't know if I'm on. Am I on? Yeah. Okay. I've spoken to the district president about this position. And the thing that I would say to you, Jerry, is, are there guys who do this out there? Yes. Do I have any idea how many? No. Do I know some that do? Yes. Are there, a lot, are, is one of the, one of the things that you hit on in, in our church body is that a lot of times, our pastors are trained to be generalists. And that's, that's one of the areas. And so it has, we have to be looking for somebody who has a specific interest in this area and, or, or to grow in this area as well. You know, it, do I know people that have that? Yes. Are there bazillion out there? No. One of the challenges we're going to face right now with any church worker that we call is, um, is that, is, is COVID. Because there hasn't been a lot of movement within, because of COVID, because people have been reluctant to leave present parishes in the middle of the pandemic, for obvious past all reasons. I don't, I'm giving you a, a non, it's kind of an, an all-over-the-place answer, because I believe it isn't all over the place. Can I guarantee that we'll find somebody? Or that somebody who loves this will come here? No, I can't. But I do think that there's niche out there, there are men out there that would be good and qualified. We've, you know, I've, I've talked to one who's said it's okay for me to put his name on the list, and I'm going to do that. But I've also asked, what I've also done is I've talked to, and I'm going to talk to him a little bit more, a friend of mine that works at the seminary, who's a professor there and, and is involved with recruitment for names of people who he thinks would fit this position in his travels around the synod. And so that's, that's, you know, and I, and I know that the district president didn't seem at all alarmed about trying to find somebody who fits our need. Now, he hasn't seen the full job description, he's just heard my description of it. So that's, you know, that comes next to, to share with him, because I wanted to make sure we were done, that I didn't share with him something that, um, and that changes, if, if you know what I mean. So that's, I don't know if that answers your question? Okay, it helps. Thank you, thank you. I'll try to help a little bit more on a, a little bit, unpack a few of the other things you questioned. One about, is this a pastor that's mature in the ministry or early in the ministry? We have on our job description seven years of experience, so a little bit of experience. So they're experienced in a variety, or have some understanding of family situations and a little bit of maturity in that. The, I think you also were discussing about succession planning, and would this pastor be the next senior pastor? And our statement by our call committee is, we're neither, that's not guaranteed and it's not implied, and we have to have that discussion upfront, because we're going to keep Pastor Braun here for countless more years, okay? However, if, if and when that day comes, that will be its own call, divine call process, right? So that's, that's not tied to this in any direct manner from our perspective, but it's, God's going to use the call process at that time to meet, have His needs met here. So I don't know if that is part of your answer to that question for you. Okay? And one other thing about, uh, go, measurements and goals. Our job description is written with about five, I think it is, Jennifer, five main roles, responsibilities. And not a lot of granularity past that. It's, it's fairly succinct, and what we would see is that pastor arrives and they, with, with leadership and with their reporting to Pastor Braun, work out specific SMART goals, specific measurable, achievable, time-directed, so forth, and work on those goal processes so that we do see measurement and have objectives. What gets measured, gets done, right? So we don't have that embodied in the job description. We try to make it a little bit more succinct and targeted, but that's, that's certainly the purpose of a regular review and discussion process with any church worker, called or contracted.
When this was first presented to the congregation, it was presented as a either-or, commissioned or ordained role. At what point in your discussions did that shift? And what was the impetus for that?
Yeah, let me make two distinctions. It has always been a called position, not contract, but it was a DCE, Director of Christian Education, versus an ordained pastor, and I think that's what you're asking. Okay?
Commissioned is lay, lay workers called to the congregation. They have to be a commission or ordained best of the business.
A DCE is, is a commissioned worker. Okay. All right. Fairly early on, we were very much tending towards it being a pastoral position because of the breadth of the, the scope of responsibility. We also saw the value of additional theological training in pastors' class. I don't have those notes, I have them in my folder. There's a little bit more information about that. If you permit me, I could go grab those, wherever I did with them. We also saw pastors as more flexible in the range of ministry needs and, and different households and different ages in the congregation. Also, as a support to the pastoral position in preaching, the, the service of preaching during worship. This is, we see this as a first, next step, not maybe necessarily the ending step for this congregation. But we've had basically three called, three called positions leave in the last year and a half and said, okay, this is, we need this strength of background and ministry capability as our next first step to drive this process and to support pastor and the congregation. So that was fairly early on, number of weeks ago, in our, in our considerations. Did I answer, did I answer sufficiently?
Yeah. So essentially, what I'm hearing you say, the need to have another ordained person on staff who could preach...
Yes.
Was a drive, was the driving force to pull it from a commission while it's a ordained?
I wouldn't say the single driving force, but it contributed to that. I think it's the scope of responsibility, the scope of ministry that was probably more central to that. It's not necessarily a youth worker or some segment... Can I add something to that? It had to do with something that, um, sorry. It had to do, and I'll turn my mic off when I sit down and turn it on, so you don't have to keep worrying about that, Kathy. It had to do with the fact that in the last couple of years, what I have seen happen is that our youth have pulled away from involvement in the congregation as a whole. By the time the, the previous DCE left, they were kind of upstairs, but never down here in the sanctuary unless they were being, given a role up front. And one of the things that I'm hoping, and I can't guarantee it, is that, one of the things is that they will see the person who's working with them in, in another role, because we want to draw the youth ministry into the congregation. I, I'm a little concerned about that, that, that we draw youth in and that they're a part of the congregation. That's not by way of, of any criticism of, of a previous administration, I don't mean that, it's just a trend that I've seen, that I think I would like to see the youth become. And I think having somebody that, that's part of their lives on a regular basis up front. I'll tell you, and I, and I heard it in my very first confirmation here. I had Richard preach, and afterwards, one of the youth that got confirmed, who's on the call team, said, "Boy, that was great to hear a sermon like that." It meant so much to her that it, it was a person up front. So that, that's one of the things that is in my mind. I don't know if it's val, you know, I, I think it's valid, but I'll be honest, okay?
Is the intent of this position to take the place of these three people who have left, or will we be looking at hiring another person?
Okay. I have a twofold answer to that. The intent is different. It's not necessarily, they were very much doers, okay? Taking the youth directly, their born bodies, taking them to the, a, a youth event. This position is a, a leader for ministry that more of us do. So it, rather than, than the, uh, doers of every, doers of being everywhere, every place, it's leading, directing, enabling, giving resources to, uh, it, it's really a, more of a leadership position than trying to do the job of three people. So it's a different kind of approach to that. It's, rather than being church-centered and home-supported, it's home-supported or lay people-driven and church-supported.
Well, I understand that, but we're, we're lost three people and we're looking at kind of one. What about the other two?
If this congregation grows, then we would be looking at more called positions as affordability, but we would really hope that energy comes from more people participating in the ministry rather than more people hired to do ministry. It, it's really, we got a really, we're really spinning our thinking, pivoting our thinking about what called positions are to be doing in a church and what we as laypeople are to be doing in a church. And it's really our ministry alongside and with the called or hired, our, our hired, contracted staff. We won't replace directly all that those three people were doing by one position, certainly, right? It has to be different. Another fact of life is, we are a little bit smaller congregation than we were a few years ago. Will we grow back and be able to come and replenish more positions? Hopefully so, but we're not there right now. And this is viewed as the next important step to rebuild and renew. So hopefully, it's not the end of the story. Hopefully, there's another call committee or another group up here and the, and we're expanding ministry and we want to add. Hopefully, that happens. But this, this is, is, it's not to directly place, replace all that those three people were doing, but to lead teams of we to be doing, doing all the, the work of that in a better way.
Hi, can, oh, I didn't know if my mask was going to be in the way. Take it off. Okay, can everyone hear me better?
Better, yes.
Okay. So I just, it's not so much a question, it's more of my experience growing up at Gloria Day. It was very much so like Thanksgiving, it was the adult table for adult ministry, and then it was children and youth ministry at the kids' table, right? And we all know Lonnie Gonzalez, he came in when I was in fifth, sixth grade, and he kind of started building the bridge to end the gap between all of the different ministries. And now, as someone who's almost 30 years old, I've seen the dramatic change. And I know Lonnie's not there anymore, but the family ministry there and the environment there has changed so much in the years from Lonnie being there into now. And it's something we have to be patient and be mindful and keep praying for, for the change. Because I've seen a dramatic change, and I love visiting, when my parents go to church, I'll go with them, and seeing how much, how much more family-focused they are. Because growing up, before Lonnie was there, it felt like I was an afterthought. I didn't feel like I was a part of the church. I just kind of went to Sunday School and was kind of thrown in a classroom. But now I see more kids in church, and I feel like they're more included. So I just wanted to say that.
I really thank you for your testimony, because Pastor... I really thank you for your testimony because Pastor Lonnie, and we all, a lot of us know and love Pastor Lonnie also, as you know, he was here a number of years ago. And he was one of these that we interviewed. How does this walk and talk live and breathe? And he talked about things like that, engaging across generational events, having this, we use the word pathway, of having events and peoples that are in their lives that are memorable, that are part of their faith journey. Confirmation is the obvious one, but there are more and others, and you probably saw that at work. So that's where, you know, I, I came into this with kind of a blank sheet of paper. I didn't know about this much at all. And we've been on a, our whole team as committee has been on a, a learning journey with it. And we've talked to people like Pastor Lonnie, we've talked to a lady named Audrey who, who's at Redeemer in Austin that is, is doing this kind of ministry work and the things that can, it can really grow in a, in a family, as a center of faith and in the congregation. So I thank you very much for sharing that and that experience with it.
I've got an observation here. This person that comes in to do this role, of course, of course, the person has to totally buy into the vision of this type of ministry that's going to be done. But you're going to be asking this person to come in and do this and this church has never done this before. He's going to rattle, he, he or she's going to rattle some cages. If it's going to work, everybody here has to be a part of the solution. Say it again, from what the pastor promoted and the team mentioned on the vision, the seniors are now part of the children ministry. The seniors are going to be part of the, of the youth ministry. Everyone's can be a part of every ministry and families are going to be the focus of it. This guy's going to have to come in here and change the way that we've been thinking. Now, that's one thing that's, and he has to provide the leadership for this and there has to be followership too. Developing sustainable family ministry teams, that's different from what we've seen before. So they'll be different kind of teams. People will be recruited to be on these teams. What will they do? We don't know. Who's going to train them? He's going to have to train them. He has to develop the training for them. He has to figure out how, who are the good people for it and then build the teams. That's hard work. It requires cooperation. It requires someone who's either seen this done before or who has God-given vision for how it's going to be done. It's going to be very, very difficult for someone to parachute in here and do that. But it can be done with your prayer and your support. Developing the recognized discipleship pathway, unless we have won the plug and play, and if this person and the pastor have to develop this discipleship pathway, which is going to work its way into all the family ministry teams and then work its way into all the homes, that's a lot of work. Now, you could start with a small catechism and you get, you're almost halfway there, obviously. But when was the last time I read my small catechism? Well, maybe a year ago. But I know where it is, I have two copies and I got to copy the Book of Concord too. Okay? I've only read part of that. But this is going to require developing this curriculum or literature or plan for getting family ministry into the homes. That's going to require guidance in developing this. That's why this person has to have excellent written and communicate, and verbal communication skills. He's got to develop his vision, develop the plan, get it installed in everybody and you got to do it quick before everybody goes, eh, it didn't work, let's do, let's go back to the old system. You're going to have to buy into this change and be a part of it. Everybody's going to have to buy into it and be a part of it. That's probably enough.
Questions, comments, suggestions?
Um, I just want to say that, and I apologize upfront, I tend to be blunt, but we cannot as a church keep doing the same thing over and over and over again and expect a different result. So yes, this is a change. We all have to be supportive of it and be a part of it. But change is good. This last year, we have changed so much because of COVID. And look at all of you here and then all the people we're all watching online. So we do need to support this. It will be difficult, it'll be different, but I think it's the right way for us to go as a stepping stone. This is a stepping stone for us. If I, if I'm correct in what you said earlier, this is a place to start.
We hope it's a big wide stepping stone. But yes, it's a next big move for this congregation. But we're the little pebbles too, you know? So we have to be part of, we're going to be the gravel walk, okay? Okay. Thank you very much. I'm going to call on Tracy to close us with a word of prayer. Thank you and we ask your continued prayer support and welcome your continued questions offline to myself or to any of the committee members or email note or whatever, okay?
I do want to take time to thank Larry because Larry is our team leader and I, Larry and Jennifer, yes. Please thank them personally because they are great leaders and Pastor's been a great advisor in this whole process and continue to pray, pray, pray. I do invite you to that prayer vigil. I do have a sign-up sheet, I didn't put it out till, so as you're walking out, if you'd like to plan to attend that, just so we get an idea of who might be coming next, not this next Wednesday, April 12th at 7:00 PM is the prayer. May 12th, yeah, we're already in May. May 12th. So there is a sign-up sheet back there in the back on the table. So if you'll sign up for that, if you would like to attend that. And if you, if plans change, we understand. So let's go to the Lord in prayer. Oh, Lord God heavenly Father, you are our Alpha and our Omega, the beginning and the end. We trust your sovereignty and ask that you stir the heart of the person that you desire in this position. Thank you for this opportunity to have an open dialogue with our Fisher's family. We ask that you continue to open our hearts and our minds to your direction, to continue to guide and bless this call process as we seek your will to fulfill your purpose. We are your church, we are the believers of you and we ask that you light our hearts on fire so that we can be an open, armed family of believers to train the next generation and to build your kingdom, Lord, your heavenly kingdom. We ask all this in Jesus' precious name. Amen. Thank you for coming.